MP candidate for Saint Anne Northeastern to lead us in prayer.
Leader of the Opposition and leader of the People's National Party and next Prime Minister of Jamaica, Mr. Mark Jefferson Golden. Other members of the platform, colleagues in the audience, members of the business community and members of the wider community, ladies and gentlemen, good evening. So this evening I've been tasked with the responsibility of opening up this evening's proceedings with prayer. Just want to share a brief word with you before we pray. The book of Nehemiah, chapter one, verse four, and chapter two, verse five. The Bible says, "When I heard these things, I sat down and wept. For some days I mourned and fasted and prayed before the God of heaven. Then I said, 'Send me to the city so that I can rebuild it.'" There's a rat trap in the house. There's a rat trap in the house. I don't know how many of you have heard this tale before. A rat was peering through the kitchen, through a crack in the wall of the kitchen and saw a farmer and his wife opening up a paper bag. And he thought to himself, "I wonder what kind of food will be revealed from the bag." Only to his agast and dismay, he realized it was a rat trap. And so he ran into the farmyard and screamed, "There is a rat trap in the house! There's a rat trap in the house!" He ran over to the pig, there is a, sorry, to the chicken, "There's a rat trap in the house." And the chicken chuckled and scratched and said, "Well, I am sorry for you. That's your problem, not mine." He turned to the pig, "There's a rat trap in the house! There's a rat trap in the house." And the pig said, "I will, you can be assured of my prayers. There's nothing else I can do but pray, and I will keep you in my prayers." He went over to the cow, "There's a rat trap in the house." The cow said, "A what trap? A cow trap? No, a rat trap. Then that's not my business." And so the rat hung his head low and walked back in the house to face the rat trap all by himself. That night while the farmer and his wife were sleeping, there was a loud snap as if the rat trap had caught something. And so the farmer's wife in the darkness went to see what was caught, didn't realize that the trap didn't catch a rat, it caught a very venomous snake by the tail. And so when she reached her hand to grab the trap, the snake bit her. She was rushed to the hospital and came back home with a fever. Now you all know that the best recipe for fever is good chicken soup. So the farmer took his hatchet and went to the barnyard to get the main ingredient for fever. The wife got worse, she didn't get better. And so neighbors and friends came and they spent the days with her hours. And the farmer realized that he needed to feed these people, so he went and he butchered the pig. Finally, the wife died and there was a huge funeral. The entire community came out. And for the repast, guess what happened? The cow was slaughtered to feed everybody. At the end of the day, the only one that was left standing was the rat. My brothers and sisters, I have so much I want to say. I don't know where to begin, but I'll take the words of the little boy who said to the preacher when he said that, start somewhere near the end. So I will tell you this in the end. Our country is in serious trouble and there are many of us here who are secured. We have job security, we have food security, we don't live in slums, we don't live behind zinc fence and boardhouses, we have titles to show for our houses, we don't live on squatting lands like most, or like many of our Jamaican people. We live in the nice luxury apartments retreated behind our gated communities. And we dare to think that the problem that plague our people, the poverty that many of our people are experiencing, the fact that healthcare is a fleeting illusion for many still to be pursued but never attained, the fact that running water in the land of wooden water is still a dream that many in our country has not yet achieved and attained to. And we believe that because water flows freely in our house, that the problem of the many is not our problem. There is a rat trap in the house and we are all in the same boat, the same sinking boat. And if you believe, my friends, that Jamaica's problem is not your problem, you have a rude awakening coming. I challenge you tonight, we cannot sit by quietly and pray about it. I have a problem with the church because the church is too silent about Jamaica's problem. And a church that sees injustice and does not speak about it is not a church. It may be an entertainment center, but it cannot be a church. Because God said, "He hath taught thee, O man, what is good, and what does the Lord require of thee but to do justice and love mercy and walk humbly with our God?" The exploitation of our people is everybody's problem. Our craft traders who are suffering even though they are cruise ship in the harbor and the craft markets are ghost towns is everybody's problem. When we have people come to our country and set up shop beside our Jamaican shops and run them out of business by order, offering same service and goods at cheaper prices is everybody's business. There's a rat trap in the house and we all have to do something about it. Let us pray. Great Heavenly Father, in Jesus' name, we commend this proceedings to you tonight. I pray that you will preside over it, rule over and overrule, let your name be exalted and glorified. And Father, when we shall walk out of here tonight, politician and people, may we remember the words of the great pledge that we all took in our early formative years before God and all mankind. I pledge the love and loyalty of my heart, the wisdom and courage of my mind, the strength and vigor of my body, in service of my fellow citizens, I promise to stand up for justice, brotherhood and peace, to serve diligently and creatively, to think generously and honestly so that Jamaica may under God increase in beauty, fellowship and prosperity and play her part in advancing the wealth here of the whole human race. May God bless you. Thank you.
There is a rat trap in the house, indeed. Thank you for taking us to the throne of God, Dr. Simpson. Dialogue and consultation are crucial for effective governance. These foster improved policy outcomes and helps to build public trust. By engaging with diverse voices and perspectives, governments can develop policies that better address societal needs and ensure a sense of ownership among its citizens. Consultation allows the government to obtain feedback from and work directly with members of the wider society throughout the policymaking process and to ensure that their issues and concerns are consistently understood, considered and met. This is your first-hand opportunity to hear from the People's National Party about plans and programs that will form part of the People's National Party government. Ladies and gentlemen, good evening. This is the People's Forum, the first in a series of its kind to be held across the country. Residents of Saint Anne, this is your first-hand opportunity to engage directly with the leadership and spokespersons of the People's National Party as we discuss the issues that matter most to you and your communities. This evening, our panelists include Mr. Mark Golden, President of the People's National Party, leader of the Opposition. Senator Professor Floyd Morris, Shadow Minister of Housing and Sustainable Living. Dr. Alfred Dawes, Shadow Minister of Health and Wellness. And finally, Dr. Kenneth Russell, Deputy Spokesperson on Education and Community Development. May I ask Senator Gabriella Morris to officially welcome you. And may I add that Senator Morris is at home because she is the parliamentary candidate for Saint Anne Northwestern and President of the People's National Party, YO. Senator Morris.
Let me start by acknowledging and welcoming to Northwest Saint Anne, our leader of the Opposition and of the People's National Party and the next Prime Minister of Jamaica, Mr. Mark Golden. It is indeed a joy to welcome each and every one of you to tonight's People's Forum, hosted right here in Runaway Bay in the great constituency of Northwest Saint Anne. And it's my constituency. As the People's National Party's caretaker for Northwest Saint Anne, I am deeply honored to host you in our constituency for this, the first leg of the national town hall series dubbed the People's Forum. Tonight, the voices of the people will echo in this room. Ideas will rise and solutions will be shaped by the people for the people. We have been joined by an exceptional team of national leaders who embody the heart and soul of the People's National Party. And I want to welcome our panelists here this afternoon. Let me also welcome the General Secretary of the People's National Party, Dr. Dane Campbell, who is also the spokesperson on agriculture. We are also joined by my fellow colleagues here in Saint Anne, and I want to acknowledge them individually, Comrade Nishka Williams. Stand and be recognized, Dr. Ryan Simpson, who you heard from before, and Dr. Kenneth Russell, who is also one of our panelists. Us four are dedicated to the task of walking the hills and valleys, of meeting with you, of working for you, of advocating on your behalf and proving that Saint Anne is indeed ready for renewal and for progress and for change. I also want to welcome our local government representatives who are here this afternoon, this evening, Comrade Hartie, I see Comrade Bell, and all other caretakers who are here. I see Comrade Philpott from right here in Northwest Saint Anne. We welcome you as well. Tonight is not just about politics, it is about partnership, it is about the community. So allow me to extend warm welcome to the members of the business community who have joined us here this evening. It is their resilience and investment in our communities that keep our local economy going. I also wish to acknowledge and to welcome civil servants who have also joined us this evening. The People's National Party has always welcomed and ensured that you are part of the conversation. And so we are happy that you have chosen to share in this evening's forum. Let me also acknowledge all our community leaders and community members who have joined us from the four constituencies in Saint Anne to ensure that you are part of this very important discussion. Your presence here tonight, it proves one thing, transformation is a team sport and we are all on the same side, the side of change and the side of progress. Together, we envision a Jamaica where an opportunity is not defined by your address, where rural communities like many of ours are seen, heard and served, and where leadership is not just about holding office, but holding responsibility for people's lives and futures. Tonight, let's talk truth, let's dream big, let's commit to doing the hard work. Because the People's National Party is not just ready to lead, we are ready to deliver for you. So welcome once again to each and everyone. Welcome to this movement. We invite you to listen to our mission and we are happy that you are part of this defining moment in our nation's history. Let me also welcome members of the media who are here with us this evening. We're happy to have you. It is one people, one purpose, one Jamaica, and the People's National Party is ready to deliver on your behalf. Have a wonderful afternoon and I look forward to discussions that will follow.
That was indeed the next member of parliament for Saint Anne Northwestern, Senator Gabriella Morris. Let me take this opportunity to welcome our viewers that have joined us online on our social media platforms. Good evening to you all. As much as I would like to think that you are here to listen to me, I know better. And so I am going to open up my platform to our panelists for them to speak to you and you in turn speak to them. The first being, of course, President of the People's National Party, leader of the Opposition, Mr. Mark Golden. Please make him welcome.
Thank you, thank you very much, Madam Master of Ceremonies. I endorse and adopt the protocols which have been observed. Very glad to see our panelists here today, our candidates who are here today, our counselors and others. This is not intended as a political meeting, although it is being put on by the People's National Party. It is a community meeting which is designed to engage in what we believe in, which is participatory democracy. So this is an opportunity for us to share some ideas with the audience who is here. Some of them are people involved in politics, many of you are not. Many of you are citizens in a variety of walks of life. We have heard business people, civil servants, and no doubt many other professionals and so on. And you've come here to listen to what we have to say and also perhaps to say some things of your own. And we appreciate that you should have this opportunity and we want to listen to what you have to say because we believe in a process of politics which engages with people, listens respectfully to what people have to say, and where what we do and the decisions we make are responsive to your concerns. That is really what the People's National Party is about in terms of how we practice politics. Jamaica is facing a general election shortly, which will be another opportunity for the people of this country, in particular those who are registered voters, to express their will as to how the country should move forward. I am very pleased that we have a panel here tonight with such talent. And it really augurs well, I think, for the future of Jamaica, that we have a panel with two candidates and somebody who is a senator. The senator is a professor at the University of the West Indies. One of the candidates is a medical doctor, a consultant surgeon. The other is a person who has a doctorate from Harvard University. These are distinguished Jamaicans, relatively young Jamaicans, who have put themselves forward to serve the people of Jamaica through the political process. And I must say that I am proud that under my leadership, we have been attracting candidates of this kind of quality. And it's not limited to those who are on the panel. Across Jamaica, we have many candidates who are outstanding and who will, when given the chance after the next general elections, be able to serve the people of Jamaica at a very high standard. Our country is facing numerous challenges. We have, of course, many accomplishments of which we must be proud. Perhaps the biggest one is the sustainability of our public finances, which over the last decade across administrations, decade and a half really, considerable effort has been made from administration to administration to follow through on certain commitments that were written into the law under the Portia Simpson Miller administration, the fiscal rules and the fiscal responsibility framework. And because of our steadfastness and the continuity of policy, we have seen where Jamaica's public debt, which when we took government in 2012 was at an unsustainably high level of over 140% of GDP, has now been brought down within that period of time to somewhere just below 70% of GDP. This is a significant national achievement, though because of the nature of it, it's somewhat abstract and not everybody can really grasp it or understand it or feel it. But it is that which enables us to do so much more in government than was possible when our debt was eating up the lion's share of our budgetary resources each year. So this is a good platform on which Jamaica can move forward. However, we have many challenges that are holding us back. And we have not seen, despite those improvements in the public debt, we have not seen our economy take off. In fact, our economy is relatively stagnant. The rate of growth which we have seen over the last 10 years has really been miniscule. We have never even achieved 3% growth in a single year. And in several years, we've had rates of growth less than 1%. And last year, we had negative growth contributed to by the hurricane that hit us in July and the travel advisory that went out early in 2024, which had an impact on the tourism market and affected our arrivals and our room rates. But there's a broader question then. How is it that we have stronger financial, a stronger financial base as a, as a country? We have good reserves, we have managed to bring unemployment down according to the official statistics, inflation is relatively low and so on, yet we can't produce growth? And the lack of growth means that the wealth per capita of our people, the wealth, if you share it among our whole population, our wealth is around 7,000 US per year is how much we generate annually. And this is way less than Pairs in the Caribbean region. And not even looking at Cayman and Bermuda and those countries, looking at countries like Trinidad, Guyana, Barbados, Antigua, St. Lucia, we are two, three, four times less well-off than they are. And this is unacceptable because our situation is not that different to theirs. They're not blessed, well, Guyana has recently been blessed with oil and gas, but, and Trinidad has had it for a while. But generally speaking, the economies across the region have somewhat similar circumstances, yet we are underperforming. And we see it in many different aspects of life. We see it in the poor transportation system, we see it in the public health system being underfunded and under-resourced, we see it in the public education system not getting the necessary investments to transition from low performance to high performance. So we have to build a strong economy and the People's National Party is absolutely dedicated to proper fiscal management, but also to looking at what we can do from a strategic perspective to increase the productivity of our nation, make our people better able to take on the jobs of the 21st century and grow wealth in the country. In order to achieve this, we feel that it's absolutely necessary that ethics, values and attitudes, a strong moral foundation must be at the center of how we govern. We do not accept that Jamaican politics should be something which the average person out there feels is a dirty game where they have no trust in their politicians, scandals, cronyism, nepotism going on year in, year out. The next PNP government under my leadership, people can have trust and confidence in. And this is central to how we will operate because we need the buy-in of all Jamaica for Jamaica to move forward. Some of our problems cannot be solved by partisan politics or even by government acting alone. Some of us are engaging with the wider population to get their buy-in and their participation because some of the problems are very deep and need a full hundred behind it to make a difference. I, and I intend under the next PNP government under my leadership to take the leadership role in really looking at how the bureaucracy functions and how we can make it more user-friendly, an easier place for people to come and invest, an easier place for people to do business, and a less frustrating environment for people to interact in whatever area it may be that you deal with the public sector. And so that is part, invest your money and have a safe environment in which to operate, and a country that is governed by the rule of law, business which is transparent and accountable. So we intend, we plan to take a new approach to governance, an approach to governance that is inclusive, that is participatory, that is respectful, into account environmental issues. Right now, we have a situation where the Environmental Agency of the country, NEPA, is housed within the Ministry of Economic Growth and Job Creation. That is a clear conflict of interest because the role of an environmental, that development is done in an environmentally sustainable way. And therefore, they need to have some independence so they can carry out that critical function without being compromised that. And there are other issues that we intend to deal with when it comes to the environment. So ladies and gentlemen, this is not an evening for long speeches by us. Each of us is going to say a few words and then we'll open up the floor for questioning. I hope that we'll have a very enjoyable and interesting interaction before we close off. That is what we have to say, interested in the future of our great, beautiful country, Jamaica. Thank you very much.
Did you hear when Mr. Golden said that we hit every target on time? There's another target that we have in mind, that's a guided missile. But when the right time comes, no pun intended, that was Mr. Mark.
President. But would like to say a special, but would like to say a special welcome because we are in the parish of Marcus Garvey, we're in the parish of Bob Marley, parish of Bob Marley. So welcome, comrade. And as we talk, and as we talk about the cultural and creative, about the cultural and creative industries, you can see why Saint Anne should have a special place in that regard. I also, I also want to acknowledge the counselors here because I think we have four of the five counselors. And if you don't mind, I'll just ask you to stand up. And I have apologies for Comrade Garrick, who is not here, but I would like to acknowledge Comrade Garrick, who is not here, but I would like to acknowledge you because cooperation. So Comrade Hartie, Comrade Jim, Comrade Bell, Comrade Bell, and Comrade Gohegan are all here. Foundation, foundation. And that we know from the evidence, if you get it right in the early years, then things get easier. It's not perfect, but it gets easier at the other stages of the system. And so we will make investments in early childhood and primary education, prioritizing those years. And a part of what we intend to do is to ensure that we have full literacy and numeracy in the primary years, ensuring all children read at grade level by the end of grade two, and automatic promotion, which is part of the problem. It's, it's a system which tells you and makes it seem as if things are working because the children are moving. because the children are moving to grade. But if you're in a secondary school in this country, you will know that you have pathway-one children who come to secondary and are not able to function even at a primary level. So we want to ensure that as part of the programme which we've announced called EASE, which means Ensuring Adequate Sustainability for Education, that every child gets a hot meal at school every day. Them say you can't love without money. But you can't learn from a hungry belly either. And when the loudest sound you can hear is the sound of your stomach rumbling, you're not focused on what the teacher is saying. Basics, we have to get those right. So in addition to that, our RIDE programme, which is our rural initiative for delivering education, will ensure that you get to school. Because at the moment, as I said earlier on, we have an attendance problem. A major factor there has to do with transportation. And so we want to ensure that over the next administration, we increase the number of students who are getting a subsidy for transportation to school from the current 7,500 to 50,000. We want to get them there and feed them while they're there. So we, we're not just about making sure you get there and you stay there. We want to make sure the content is it that you learn when you... And a major part of what, and the comrade leader made mention of it earlier on, we want to make sure we have a government that is transparent and accountable. That starts with ensuring that our children are also learning ethics, our children are learning civics and our children have the moral foundation that will tell us that wrong is wrong, right is right. And nobody, no better way to do that than to ensure the teachings of our homeboy, the right, excellent Marcus Mosiah Garvey is taught in schools. So we have to look at the curriculum and we intend to look at it and to make sure the early years of school are focused, as we said earlier on, on literacy and numeracy, but also making sure our children are able to think, to be creative and ensure moral, ethical lessons are integrated. And as I said, Marcus Garvey leading the way in that regard. Now, in this parish, we have about 26,000 or 27,000 students attending schools. What we do not have sufficient of is spaces for children with special needs. We have a system in this country which is actually pretty robust in design. But you know, if you design it perfectly and it's not implemented well, we have a problem. And right now, that's what we have. Good design, poor implementation. And so we intend to ensure that the system for screening, referral and early intervention for children with special needs is more robust, given the resources that are required. And in some places, including, we create the spaces that are needed. And that is going to be revolutionary. Now, we know too that at the tertiary level, if you want to really transform a family, if you want to really transform a community and, dare I say, a country, you have to give emphasis to tertiary education. We start at the bottom, we build up. So when we say one degree per, each family gets one scholarship to ensure us a happy Teachers' Day. Now, we have a package which we want to ensure teachers understand. We have had a history as a party of, to a certain extent, being built by teachers, but also making sure we're standing with teachers because we know how central they are. A teacher is the number one most effective investment you can make to improve learning, your child's learning. It's not a gadget, it's not the classroom, it's the teacher. And so our teacher support package is one that is going to touch on multiple facets of the teacher's life. Access to support from the NHT is a part of it. Graduated motor vehicle concessions so that, as it is now, those concessions are concentrated at certain levels of the system. And we want to ensure more teachers are able to access those based on your years of service. We also want to ensure that a parish such as this, Comrade Golding, which is still largely rural, you can attract some of the best teachers by paying them. We want to return what was called the peril pay. Give teachers an incentive to teach in difficult areas, deep rural areas, areas that might not be safe, volatile areas. So the peril pay is an incentive to ensure that this injustice which I spoke about is corrected because now they are incentivised to teach in those areas. And if you've been following the news, you would know that in recent days, we've been having a discussion about the Teaching Council, a lisation of the profession of teaching. The work I have done in multiple countries has contributed to the establishment of some of these councils. Those councils are developmental. They support teachers. They make teachers appreciate their profession, develop themselves, licence and all of that. We support that. Our difficulty at the moment is that we have a bill which is punitive, which seems to want to catch the teacher doing something bad instead of helping the teacher to get better. They're playing gotcha. We, the People's National Party, we play Let's Do It Together. And so we want a more robust, a more inclusive and a Teaching Council and a Teaching Council Bill which will allow teachers to feel protected, valued and are able to pursue the development which they require. So we want to simplify some of the provisions. At the moment, teachers are required, for example, to be licensed and get certified every five years. We don't think that's necessary and the best evidence suggests it's not. At the moment, we are not clear how teachers will pay for their capacity development. We are saying that should be provided to teachers at no cost. At the moment, teachers could be charged up to $1 million, $1 million to practise without a licence. We don't think that's the best way to go. And so we, in partnership with the teachers and their unions, will ensure, develop a more robust and a more developmentally focused Teaching Council Bill. Now, I know you probably know this, but I still want to say to you that about 60% of our workforce, 60, that's two of every, three of every five persons in our workforce has no formal certification. An Unplum and Ten delivers the same thing or knows the same thing. And so we have this challenge even as we have children who are leaving high school, sometimes after seven, after eight years, without certification. We want to change that. So in the next PNP government, we want to have a second look, revitalise, revamp the hard-trust NTA. We want to transform it into a modern engine for training and employment. And as part of that process, we intend to establish state-of-the-art vocational labs in every high school, building a pathway for every student to leave high school with a Level Four certification. We cannot build a modern economy. We cannot grow in the way the comrade leader has spoken about without solid training, without certification of our workers. And we are not going to be globally relevant if we don't have a top-of-the-line training institute, which heart can be. So we are the party of justice and we want to ensure that we mash down the injustices that we see around us. And apart of that, nothing does that better than an education system where, when you send your child to school, you're almost certain of what the result will be at the end of the day. At the moment, it's hit or miss and we intend to change that. So this is work that requires all partners, all players to get on board, to participate. Some of these ideas need further thinking through and we welcome your suggestions. We welcome if you have papers that you've written or if you just have a WhatsApp message which you want to send. However you send it, our role this afternoon and as we lead up to government and even when we form the government is to hear your voice and to join hands with you to make it a reality. I thank you, everybody.
To transform communities, emphasis must be placed on tertiary-level education. Did I mention that that was Harvard graduate, Dr. Kenneth Russell? Party leader, you know I wouldn't be able to sleep tonight if I didn't say this. I wish that I had waited on this one-degree-per-household policy. If I had just gotten wind of it, I would personally benefit from it. But my son will benefit in waiting, indeed. Please give Dr. Russell another round of applause. The other gentleman I'm about to invite to loan my microphone is a medical doctor. And I tested it. I tell you what I did. I asked him to write something on a piece of paper and I'm not able to read it. So the gentleman I am about to call to the microphone is the former president of the Medical Doctors Association and our shadow spokesperson on health and wellness, Dr. Alfred Dawes. Please make him welcome.
Madam Chair, a real setup. Prime Minister in waiting, Mark Golden. And I can't wait until I can drop the in-waiting. Other panelists, members of the political directorates, business community, family and friends, good evening. This evening, I want you, or I dare you, to dream with me. I don't want you to think about the sorry state of healthcare today. I think enough has been said about it. What I want you to do is to dream with me so that we can all make it a reality, my vision and the party's vision for healthcare in Jamaica. We must first accept that health is a human right. As much as you can breathe, move around, love, take care of your families, it is your right. And it is a necessity for economic development because a healthy population is a wealthy population. Productivity is dependent on health. We take sick days and we spend money and we don't produce. And that affects the bottom line. And that is going to be one of the reasons why we cannot grow at the rate at which we want to grow if we allow health, healthcare to continue to decline in Jamaica. And as such, it is the prerogative of the government to keep its population healthy. We must have citizens protected from companies discharging harmful chemicals into rivers. The government must protect his citizens from water in its pipe, in their pipes that is contaminated by bacteria found in feces. It is the prerogative of the government to ensure that harmful chemicals and additives in foods are not in our foods in Jamaica. And of course, the ministry which I speak for in the shadow capacity, the Ministry of Health and Wellness, it is the priority of that ministry to prevent diseases and when someone is sick, to expeditiously cure those diseases humanely and with dignity. It means that at every point of contact, there must be quality healthcare and it must be delivered by staff who understand customer service in conditions that are conducive to you going to the hospital and getting better and feeling good. Not about waiting on the floor or being turned away because services are not available. And we must look at these points of contacts and how we are going to fix them. And let's start with the emergency services. Here in St. Anne, I was surprised when I toured the hospital to find out that St. Anne's Bay is one of our major trauma centres in Jamaica. And it is simply because it is at the intersection of the North Coast Highway and the North-South Highway. So there are a lot of accidents coming in and you are the, you have the hospital that is a referral centre from as far east as Port Antonio and because Cornwall Regional is non-functional as far as St. James in some instances. Now, any emergency must be responded to by a dedicated emergency team. You must have a proper functioning ambulance service. And that proper functioning ambulance service must have trained emergency medical technicians and they must have working ambulances that are not transport buses. And we will provide training and expansion of the EMT services that was conceptualised under the last PNP administration through the Fire Brigade Department and has since been gutted in the last nine years. We will bring back emergency medical services and we will expand it so that you will have proper ambulances outfitted with trained first responders. And that means when there's an accident, you won't see passersby videotaping and pulling out people out of the wreck by their heads. We will stabilise patients and take them to different levels of trauma centres. And we will now look at how we're going to develop a comprehensive trauma centre, uh, system across Jamaica so that no matter where you are and you're in an accident, you will have quality healthcare just a few miles away. We are not reinventing the wheel. Trauma systems have existed from the 1800s and it is just a matter of tailoring it for our population and our terrain. So you have different levels of trauma centres from level one to level four. And it may simply mean that you stabilise a patient that their airways, breathing and heart are functioning. They're not losing blood. Then they go on to an ambulance to another more sophisticated trauma centre where they will have more investigations and a trauma team of surgeons with functional operating theatres, CT scans, MRIs as needed so that they can be expeditiously treated. theatres CT scans MRIs as needed so that they can be expeditiously treated it means that when someone needs blood we will not be having appeals on Facebook but we will have a proper national blood banking services with blood available across the island it means that our operating theatres will be outfitted it means that if it requires ear lifting we will have proper arrangements with the JDF so that we will be able to stabilize and move patients in the golden hours the first six hours after an accident when survival rates are determined by how fast they can get specialized care and it's not just for accidents this is for strokes we see 7,000 strokes every year many of them result in preventable deaths 2,500 on average people die every year from a stroke a lot of these are preventable a lot of the paraplegia the lack of the inability to walk later on are because you don't have a timely intervention to stop this emergency we need to start looking at strokes as not just strokes just as we have a heart attack that you treat and reverse a stroke is a brain attack that you can treat and reverse so we will revamp emergency services we will expand emergency departments to make them more comfortable get them more well-staffed and we will have our dedicated rooms to manage chest pain trauma asthma etc as needed all of these blueprints already exist it is just to tailor it we are going to shift from infrastructural and grand project developments to focusing on the delivery of service it is the role of the Ministry of Health to try and prevent diseases and if we do have diseases to catch them at an early enough stage where treatment is easier cheaper and more effective anybody who cannot cook like myself knows that you out the fire on the stove before it spreads to the kitchen we have half of Jamaicans with diabetes not knowing that they're diabetic forty percent of hypertensives not knowing that they're hypertensive we are seeing breast cancers being picked up in ninety percent of cases with a lump which means that they have had the ladies unfortunately have had that cancer for over a year seventy percent to seventy-five percent of colon cancers are picked up when they are advanced and the majority of prostate cancers when they have already spread any woman who gets cervical cancer in 2025 has been failed by the system because it is an entirely preventable disease with proper pap smear screening of the population and so the People's National Party government will prioritize prevention it means national screening programs and I saw during the party leader's speech when he spoke about having not rolling out national screening program there were some scoffing from the other side to say that it already exists and what that speaks to is a lack of understanding of what screening entails screening does not mean you go out on a roadshow and tell people that they should know their numbers screening means you have availability of the screening tests and access to the screening tests so telling somebody they should check their sugar is nothing at all to a medical professional or that person if there's no way for them to check their sugar so those programs that supposedly exist that are screening programs they cannot work and that is why chronic diseases are the number one causes of death number two number three in Jamaica you cannot say that you have a national screening program when there are at most two mammograms across Jamaica in the public healthcare sector that is not access we need mammograms in every parish we need to be screening for colon cancer blood in the stool and colonoscopy is being available in every parish not the status quo where if you go to KPH if the machine is working you will get a date for 2027 for a colonoscopy if you are noticing signs of advanced disease and that is why we are picking up cancers when they have spread we will bring screening in a sustainable way to the people and we're going to go back to basics what we did in the 1970s with the Community Health AIDS we're going to do we combated communicable diseases infectious diseases back then we were one of the first countries in the western hemisphere to get rid of polio we got rid of measles rubella malaria we never fine tuned and made that change to how we structured our public health system to face the growing threat of chronic non-communicable diseases and that is what we're going to do now the Community Health AIDS will be retrained and sent out with point of care machines so that they can do screenings themselves at churches community events schools or even going into homes and checking to see what somebody's sugar has been like over the last six months you don't have to be fasting the technology exists where we can tell you then and there with a few drops of blood whether or not you're a diabetic how bad that diabetes is whether you're pre-diabetic and then we can make the necessary interventions so that you don't become diabetic or we get your diabetes under control before you have to seek healthcare at the hospital with a heart attack kidney disease needing dialysis or and become one of the fifteen people every month who get amputations and that is how we plan to have a sustainable screening program we will have mammograms as I said in every parish we will have colonoscopy units and I've spoken to some colleagues who have made submissions that were ignored about having training programs to increase the capacity of our local doctors to perform these life-saving procedures we will work with those clinical professionals who are so eager to find the policymakers who support their dream of providing improved healthcare but if you do get a disease we want to make sure that the clinics are staffed we want to make sure that you have access to that care and I keep speaking about access because somebody thinks that if something is available it is accessible that is not true there are social determinants of health people cannot find bus fare and taxi fare to come sometimes people have to think about providing light at their home by paying bills versus buying medications for a disease that they're not feeling symptoms for and these have to be taken into consideration so when we speak about access we are speaking about the ability to get healthcare that is close by which means that the clinics through telemedicine in rural areas or by the development of urgent care facilities we will have access to healthcare when we need it without going to the hospital and overcrowding those hospitals these urgent care facilities are an improvement of what was tried and failed on the current administration where they tried to extend the opening hours of clinics now you as the user and any clinician who is treating those patients could have told them that it would have failed because if you come to me as a doctor in that clinic at eight o'clock at night or nine o'clock at night and you have a complaint I need to do some blood tests and I need to do some x-rays to supplement my clinical examination so I can make a diagnosis right I can't just treat you and just give you antibiotics to go home without seeing whether or not an x-ray shows that you have a pneumonia so you have sat down and waited and you have seen me in that clinic and I'm going to write up a request form for you to go to the hospital now to go and get that x-ray you're going to say it doesn't make any sense I go to the clinic since I still have to go to the hospital to wait again and that is why that program failed now again as technology has evolved we have point of care testing where you don't need a full sophisticated lab you can get the lab results drawn then and there the blood running some point of care machines and you spit out the results immediately the doctor gets that and can make a decision we have enough teleradiology units available where you can outfit a modular area unit or you retrofit an existing area in a clinic with a simple x-ray not one of those expensive ones that break down every minute but practical units where the doctors and nurses can make the diagnosis without you going to the hospital and initiate treatment and you go home because eighty percent of visits to the emergency department do not require hospital admission and when you have urgent care centers across Jamaica outfitted like that less people will need to go to the hospitals and of course if you need to remember we have a working ambulance service for transport we have to address of course the challenges and staffing is a major problem especially in rural areas and in discussions with Senator Floyd Morris Professor we have already identified ways in which we can look at staff retention and one of those incentives that we want to look at is to have 5,000 houses available for doctors and nurses coming out and starting because we want you to feel a connection to Jamaica and that is a Jamaican dream we want to look at incentivizing training if you're an ambitious young professional if you want to go to Alexandria and work you're going to be prioritized to get into a postgraduate program because you have shown that whereas it may not be as comfortable there you're willing to sacrifice to serve and you will be rewarded with a scholarship for postgraduate program when you have completed your tour of duty so with that approach we expect the best the brightest the most ambitious to want to go into the rural underserved areas and that is how we're going to lift the quality of healthcare in those communities we have a problem with maintenance whether it is of the plant or whether it's of the equipment that is too easy to fix by the stroke of a ministerial pen we can prioritize maintenance it does not sound so hard to do so does it whereas there are infrastructural inadequacies we do note that there have been some infrastructural developments and we commend that but people do not go to a hospital to look at a pretty waiting room while they're waiting for long hours to get healthcare they go to get better and so whereas we will be looking at infrastructural development our concentration will be as I mentioned before on service delivery and of course quality assurance the audits that were initiated under the last PNP administration those stopped nobody checked again to see if there was any mold in the operating theatres whether ACs were working whether infection control committees were functional they just stopped and it is no surprise that now we're seeing mold crises across several clinics and hospitals because of poor maintenance we're seeing bathrooms kept in poor conditions and we're seeing a lot of hospital acquired infections we want to have a national quality assurance board where each hospital will be audited and to ensure that there are certain standards that are maintained whether it is in patient care infection control and certain parameters that will say yes you're cleaning the place properly we're not going to have a lot of neonatal deaths and outbreaks we're not going to have maternal deaths at a high rate as it was in the 1980s as what exists now and we're going to work on bringing these indicators to first world standards and of course administration and governance there must be accountability especially with how taxpayer dollars are spent and in closing because Madame Chairperson has come beside me and started to clear her and I was telling Dr Russell that he took twenty minutes and I'm afraid of how long he's gonna tell me I took up here the next administration will realign the priorities of the Ministry of Health to service delivery not optics and not enrichment of a few thank
for a while there I thought I was not going to get back my microphone you know what they say when you give a politician a mic right and when that politician is also a medical doctor speaking on the field of medicine that he knows the ins and outs of the pros and cons of it's hard to stop him you know they used to refer to the People's National Party as the party for lawyers we are also becoming the party for doctors thank you Dr Dawes healthcare is about to get an upgrade that no means say if you got sick now you know but we are eagerly awaiting this I have one more person one more panelist to address you do you know who that person is that person is no other than Senator Professor Floyd Morris Shadow Minister of Housing and Sustainable Living
Madame Chairperson leader of the opposition and President of the People's National Party and the next Prime Minister of Jamaica Mr Mark Jefferson Golden my colleague panelists and members of the Shadow Spokesperson team the General Secretary the man marshalling the People's National Party to victory candidates and standard bearers for the People's National Party in the parishes of St Anne and Trelawney ladies and gentlemen brothers and sisters a pleasant good evening to you all I am very happy to be here to participate in the first of a series dubbed the People's and it is very important for us to note and understand that we are starting off this series in three fundamental areas of life that touches on every single Jamaican citizens and education healthcare and housing are all fundamental human rights and it shows our value to these three areas and so I am very joyful and happy to speak on the portfolio of housing and sustainable living because I will tell you this ladies and gentlemen that two years ago when I was that two years ago, when I was called by my leader and he said to me that I'm going to assign you the portfolio of housing and sustainable living, I deemed it a joy because it was a shift from the traditional areas that have been assigned to me as a person with a disability. And what my leader was saying to me is that, "Look, I see your talent as much bigger than just dealing with disability issues. I want you to manage the housing portfolio." And as I contemplated the task that he gave me, I have to make reference to the fact that I originate from a community called Bailey's Vale in St. Mary, a rural community where my mother grew me up in a four-bedroom house with eight children. And then those children start to expand the family and we move to fifteen. And because of the caring nature of my mother, she took in community members so that they could have food to eat and a roof over their head, and it expanded to over twenty. So I understand the importance of shelter to the people of Jamaica. And so when I stand up here to speak to you, I am one of you. And I couldn't be a party to a grouping that is going to come and sell the Jamaican people hollow. A real stuff we are going to deal with now. The truth is that from as far back as the nineteen fifties, the People's National Party has established in its DNA housing. Norman Manley built whole pastures, Mona and Arbor View. And in the nineteen seventies, having traveled Jamaica and seen our people living in bamboo houses, wattle and daub and thatch houses, Michael Manley said, "That cannot continue." And he established the National Housing Trust, which to date have seen over two hundred thousand houses built in this country, changing the face of houses in Jamaica. And then in the nineteen nineties, PJ Patterson came with Operation Pride to provide land and housing for our people. And that is how people in Mount Edge come right in this constituency, get them houses. People in Bel Air in this constituency get their houses. And then in the mid-two thousand, Portia Simpson Miller decided that her brothers and sisters must not continue to live in barracks houses. And so she tore down every one of them and built concrete houses for sugar workers across Jamaica. So it is in the DNA of the People's National Party to build quality and affordable houses. And so when my leader said to me, "Your mandate is to come up with a strategy to provide affordable houses to the people of Jamaica", I entered upon the reference and put together a task force that has worked with me to build out a number of strategies to ensure that we provide affordable houses to Jamaica. To date, based on data, it is showing that there is a need for over one hundred and ninety thousand houses in Jamaica. And in order for us to keep up with the demand for houses, we have to be building fifteen thousand on an annual basis. The government of the day, for the past nine years, have been building on average two thousand three hundred houses per year. Last year, the NHT committed to build fifteen thousand and nine houses to deliver to the market. They only delivered two thousand seven hundred and fifty-four. If that is not a colossal failure, I don't know what else is. And so we have designed a number of strategies to tackle the housing crisis. And we were able to present to our leader so that he could go to Parliament and present in the budget presentation a clear vision as to how a People's National Party-led administration by Mark Jefferson Golding is going to start the housing revolution in Jamaica. And we have signaled the first thing we're going to be doing is to stop the annual extraction of eleven point four billion dollars from the NHT to fund the national budget. What has happened over the past thirteen years is that close to one hundred and fifty billion dollars of contributors' money have been used to fund the national budget. And we understand the circumstances. But my leader said, "Time come." And based on that, on the fact that so much money has been spent to top up the national budget, your caring leader has said to the nation that we must give back to the contributors of the NHT because one hundred and fifty billion dollars of their money have been extracted from the trust. And so what we are going to be doing is that we are going to be building fifty thousand low-income houses because the market has not been catering to these individuals who have contributed to the NHT over the years. And the leader has said, "Because of your money being used to top up the budget, we're not going to make you pay for the land portion of the housing cost when we build those houses." What that means is between two point five to three million dollars savings for those individuals who will be purchasing their houses. And we're not going to take back the land from the people. We're not going to take back the land for the people. What that is going to do is immediately build up equity in the property that the individuals will get. That is what Mark Jefferson Golding is contemplating for the people of Jamaica. And he has not just stopped there. He has said to the country that young people must get the opportunity to own their owner's house. And he's not going to give no idle promise to the young people, like some people who promised to give ten thousand houses to young people and delivered not one. He has said that out of the eleven point four billion dollars, we are going to set up a special fund with one billion dollars annually and five hundred thousand dollars each young person will get to pay the deposit on their houses across this country. As a grant, as a grant, you're not going to pay it back. But the leader and the team never stopped there. We look around and we see the barbers. We see the farmers. We see the taxi men. We see the dressmakers and the bar owners. And we say, "These people need to own a house too, but they can't own it because they're not getting a monthly pay slip." So what our leader said, rent-to-buy. We are going to allow a portion of these houses that we are going to build to go to rent-to-buy scheme so that the barber man, the taxi man, the dressmaker, the farmer can rent a unit. And when we see how they are paying for the houses, paying the rent, then we'll convert that rent into a mortgage so that these individuals can own their own house. Because the PNP believe that people must have their owner keys for their houses. We believe that it is better for you to own your owner key than for rent somebody's house. Because when you pay a mortgage, when you pay a mortgage, you own your own key. When you pay rent, you borrow somebody's key. And then, you know, the General Secretary is here. And he know that me love to see a lot of things. And the leader has sent me across this country to visit those areas where you have had Operation Pride developments to evaluate the situation where we are and where we need to go. And based on my visits right across this country, come back and make some recommendation to him. And coming out of that, we are going to establish the program for the orderly renewal and transformation of infrastructure in all areas, the Portia Initiative, that is going to see the tearing down of sink fences, the building of sidewalks, and the handing over of titles to those communities and to those citizens who need to own the land that they are living on. I say to those individuals who are living in the forty-seven incomplete Operation Pride developments, if a Mark Jefferson Golding-led PNP don't deal with those developments, nobody else will. Nobody else will. And so we are committed to ensuring that we complete those developments and restore dignity to the lives of people across this country. Let me tell you something. We're not even worrying about anything because I have said to the leader, the fifty thousand houses that we build, it's not giving or giving them away. They are going to be sold to people across the country. And we expect to make a profit. And what we are going to do with the profit, some of the profit, is to fund that Portia Initiative because we believe that we must transform Jamaica and empower the people in their communities across this country. So if them want to know how we going to fund them programs here, them can hug up that. And I say that since the leader have made these announcements, I have been inundated with calls from individuals across Jamaica, including representatives in different constituencies. The candidate for the PNP in southwest St. Anne has called me. And she said that she want to get the first housing development in southwest St. Anne. And I said to her, "Don't you worry, Danishka, because help is on the way. We are going to be providing you with some of those low-income houses." And the Member of Parliament from southeast St. Anne get jealous. And he have a counselor for the Beach of Town Development, Beach of Town Division, the Beach of Town Division, who join in with him. And I say, "Don't you worry, Dr Russell. Help is on the way because we are going to be providing you with some of the fifty thousand houses in your constituency. Portia will be implementing the Parry Town area to complete that Operation Pride development." And if that wasn't enough, the Member of Parliament next for northeast St. Anne, Dr Simpson, called me and him say, "Listen me. Me here say everybody I get something. What happened to northeast St. Anne?" I said to him, "Don't you worry because the people in Miami Bay will be taken care of. And the people out there in Pimenta Walk will be taken care of as well." And then the Member of Parliament in waiting for northwest St. Anne, she called me and she said, "Remember, that is Morris, me name. Remember that I am your political daughter. What is in it for me?" And I said to her, "Don't you worry because we have identified the largest block of land on the north coast. And you're going to be getting a brand-new community in Mount Edge Gom Five. And we're going to be building a significant block of houses there that would ensure that hotel workers and the people of northwest St. Anne can get quality housing." So I say to you, Mark Jefferson Golding has given me a mandate. And I am going to deliver on that mandate because it's the People's National Party that has said housing all the time. And we are going to continue on that trajectory to make sure that our people in Jamaica get access to quality and affordable housing. God bless you.
I am hearing that time come. I am hearing that help is on the way. The man who sees a lot of things. The man that will see to it that the NHT will return to its original mandate. The man that will see to it that young people... The man that will see to it that young people will be put in a better position to own their own homes. That was Senator Professor Floyd Morris. We have important stuff to deal with. Which panelist said that? Senator Floyd Morris said, we have important stuff to deal with. And we are about to deal with the important stuff. So ladies and gentlemen, this is where you get your opportunity to hear your concerns, to give your suggestions to the leadership, to the spokespersons of the People's National Party, party that will form the next government of Jamaica. Yes, indeed. Mr. Martin, are we ready to open the floor? Do I have persons with questions for my panelists? Please indicate with a show of hands. Mr. Martin? In the meantime, there's a need for the elections to be called. We are eagerly waiting for the elections to be called, indeed. You say next week. You're ready for your clinic, you're ready for your house, you're ready for everything, you're ready for a People's National Party-led government, indeed. Have we sorted out the microphone? Yes, we have. Just a minute, just a minute. I'm gonna ask for your undivided attention. Good evening. Just a, ma'am.
Good evening.
Just a minute. I'm gonna ask that you state your name, the constituency that you are from and the panelist that you would like to address your question. You can go ahead.
Good evening, everyone. Welcome to northwest Saint Anne. My name is Camille Adijon. I live in Salem in Runaway Bay. I have been the president of the Runaway Bay CDC for nearly seven years. I have just kind of stepped back from that because I think nearly seven years is enough. And but I've established a foundation that will focus on children and the elders. That's because of my experience and seeing where the gaps are. So that's the focus. So we are here from the foundation tonight. Now, my, I want to thank all the panels for the presentation. It's really been heartening. Dr. Dawes, this one is very much for you. In Runaway Bay, that bit, the whole bit where we look like is the golden mile then. One of the things that has been attracted here has been a lot of people from the rural areas and so on to try and make life because of the hotels and the guesthouses. Increasingly what we have found and over the years I've, we fed the homeless and so on through the CDC is the mental, the mental health issues. We have so many people that we have, we are trying to feed and assist who are living with mental health issues. We desperately need to hear how the People's National Party are going to try and address that because we need something, intervention to deal with the people who are very transient but they come in, you know, over and over again and live along the streets of Runaway Bay. Thank you.
Thank you. That's a good question. And because of the time constraints, as you can imagine, I couldn't go into all of the details with the different areas. But mental health is very near and dear to me. If you look historically at what should have happened under the last, the PNP administration that ended in 2007, the plan was to downgrade or downscale the Bustamante, not the Bustamante, the Bellevue Hospital and move patients closer to their communities. So you would have mental health care at the parish hospitals. Now you would have gotten treatment there and then you would have had some, call them halfway houses where you're a little bit more stable and you're, can be moved to these halfway houses where your relatives could come and visit you, where you would be slowly reintegrated into the community. But election came, the JLP administration came in, they down scaled Bellevue Hospital and did nothing to increase the capacity of the parish hospitals or create these halfway houses. And then by the time we assume government again, it was austerity time when we were mandated to have a seven percent surplus so we could hardly do anything. So nothing has happened with respect to mental health in the last nine years. We see persons in the community, mental health patients, they get psychotic breaks. There's an acute crisis team that goes in, grabs them, sometimes with the police. And sometimes this is after they attack someone, which is why you keep hearing about these savage attacks and it's somebody who is mentally challenged. Or they are beaten by members of the community because they are giving trouble. So they're taken to hospitals, their acute psychotic breaks are treated and then they are discharged back into the community. Some of them may not be compliant with the medication. Some may go to, you know, poor relief shelters and so on. And some are with families who just cannot cope. So it's a cycle that repeats itself. So we have to now go back to the plan. And it's there again, a lot of these things that I'm speaking about, there are green papers, white papers, it's just about implementing them. So we need to get the hospitals adequately staffed with psychiatrists, psychiatric nurses and psychiatric aides. And we need to develop these halfway houses, which is, would be similar to what you would have mentioned where you would have community volunteers coming in to help these people reintegrated into society. And we're gonna use arts, sports, music, et cetera to, you know, get them a little bit more functional. The other thing we have to look at is that we as a country... ...with harmful situations and I am not ashamed. I do therapy and therapy is an amazing thing. It helps me to deal with stress. It helps me to continually improve myself, work on myself. And it's one of the best things that has happened to me. Men think that this is taboo and some people are probably looking down on me for saying it. No. ...generational trauma that's passed on. We have to fix ourselves while the government helps to fix the mental health care system.
Thank you, Dr. Dawes. You have a question, Commissioner McFarlane? Go ahead. The counselor has a question.
Yeah, good night, everyone. Hey, I'm Counselor Paul McFarlane for the Callowood Division and the Saint Anne Municipal Corporation. And it's a very informative session and I listen intensely. And as a representative of the people and with the concern that some people do have, this is for you, Dr. Dawes, as it relates to their documents in the respective hospital and health centers, they go lost from time to time. Personally, I do not think we have a digital system that minds all of, all of these patient care documents. I'm just wondering if there's any plan in place for us to digitalize the system and to have them networking from one center to the next. For instance, somebody would have a but that person record may be in Montego Bay and the person will be transported to Ascendant Bay. So therefore, all his medical record would be in Montego Bay, right? I'm just wondering if there is a system coming up that would modernize this situation so that when that person gets to Ascendant Bay, they can go on, click and it pop up so that person can be treated in an expeditious way. So I don't know how many people are following it but this is one of the issues that we had raised sometime last year. A request for proposals was made by the Ministry of Health for the provision of an electronic health records system. That should have, that should have been for about four hundred and fifty million dollars. The contract was awarded to a company and the value of that contract was almost eight hundred million dollars with no explanation as to why you had that massive variation. A lot of local contractors were excluded. Some would not have bid on that smaller value, uh, contract, value contract. So the process was flawed. Since implementation at several hospitals, there have been glaring gaps. So when you have a system, an electronic health record system, lab must be able to talk to it, x-ray must be able to talk to it and it must be able to talk to the clinics and different hospitals. That is not the case. So we need to revisit this contract that was awarded, look at that system to see if it is the best value for money for taxpayers. And if we, if it is a case where it is not, then we have to go back to the drawing board and get a system that we can implement across Jamaica. Now, in implementing this system is not just to buy software and put it on computers. You have to get the staff to own it, to buy in and it must be easily used. And those are some of the things that we have to look at in getting an electronic health record system. But it is a priority. It is a part of, it is going to include what we're doing with our screening program. So the nurses going out and screening the communities, we would have all of that database uploaded for doctors and nurses to review. So what we want is a comprehensive digitization of health records that is HIPAA compliant, compliant to the Data Protection Act and anywhere in Jamaica. And you can have access to that, to your results. So if you go to a doctor, you don't tell the doctor that you're taking some white pill or yellow pill. We should be able, what you say, you take blue pill, sorry, not doggy do that. We should be able to pull your drug records, your labs and x-rays and so on. And you can get care based on your medical history anywhere in Jamaica, whether it is public practice, public practice or private practice. So it is coming.
Thanks again, Doc. Could you state your name, the constituency you are from and the panelist that you are directing your question to? Good evening, sir.
Thank you. Check. Good evening. All right, my name is Ronald Goliath and I, from the constituency of northwest Saint Anne, Belier in particular. Dr Russell, education. I, as a contractor, here I'm in northwest, I provide transportation for various schools. And I must say, I heard you mention that, um, the, you are the next PNP government from the government, next PNP administration from government. You're gonna ensure that there are things in place to assist these kids in going to school. And I must say, I truly welcome that because as it is right now, it's a huge burden on most of us, private contractors because we have kids going to school. Right now I have people on my contract that has paid one time since January. And it's one of the hardest things to tell them, don't come on the bus because we know these kids must get an education. But at the end of the day, it becomes a burden on us. So I'm saying to you, I will welcome that quickly to, um, I'm, I can say I'm from Belier and I'm a former president of the Citizens Association. And for many years, we have been trying to get the local authorities to come to a rescue as it relates to the poor road conditions in the community, overgrown debris and also improper lighting. We have, um, we have several cars been stolen from the community. In the past, I'd say two months, probably about six or eight cars been stolen from there. And it's a result, we have literally almost cut off from one section of the community right now. And I personally have reached out to counselors, I reach out to MP and I reach out to the mayor and nothing has been done about this. So from where you sit, I'm gonna ask that, you're not in government but if you can nudge them to pay Belier some attention, we really appreciate that. Thank you.
Ah, good night. And I'm gonna say my Prime Minister in waiting. I'm saying good night to my Prime Minister and my Member of Parliament, Gabriel Morris. But I'm to Dr Russell. Dr Russell, good night. You had mentioned that early childhood education is the foundation of the upliftment of our children educationally. But you have not stated what strategies you're gonna use to improve that sector. I don't know if you know that in some of the schools, both early childhood and secondary, you have fifty to sixty students to one teacher. So what we want to know is what strategy, what you're gonna be doing different to ensure that early childhood and the secondary education becomes the foundation for the upliftment educationally of our children.
Okay, thank you. Um, let me, before I answer your question, respond quickly to Mr. Lyons's point. The, the transportation issue, that's critical because if you can't get to school or if you're getting to school late consistently, then you're losing time. When I, when I went to the great Fern Court, we had days when we would walk two, three kilometers and then have to go back home because we couldn't get transportation to go to school. So we want to ensure that that's not the reality of any child in this country. And we are looking forward to partnering with private operators such as yourself to ensure that we're able to serve the nooks and crannies of this, of this country. As it regards strategies, the, there are some fundamental things which we have to get right in the early years. And I spoke about the need for screening, making sure we understand where the children are developmentally. And that is an essential part of understanding how we teach, how we support them to, to improve. So strengthening the screening referral and systems for early intervention. Already, there is a... Already, there is a grade one readiness inventory, a profile of the child coming into grade one. It's not being used, but it's there. And that's something that we have to ensure gets implemented properly. The second aspect of it, the, the, the system continues to be run primarily. A lot of the children of the early years are in the basic schools, which are of a different quality than the infant schools. And so we have to make sure that we're looking at that, providing the support where children are attending and ensuring that we have quality teachers and the learning materials that are required in those spaces. At the moment, that is not the case. It's not consistent. The third aspect of it has to do with the, the training and the ongoing professional development of teachers and ensuring that they get the support that they need, but they're also supporting the children in a way that they are meeting the required developmental milestones. Uh, and so now, if you go back from that first assessment and we're checking, we have grade three, grade four, grade five, up to pep at grade six, you would have enough checkpoints to know how the child is performing. And a significant part of that, as I said earlier, is making sure we're not just passing children through the system from one grade to the other and that the children are actually being supported. Assessment for learning, not just the assessment of learning, but assessing them to see how we support them to learn better. That's something that we have to strengthen. We have to do a lot more work in, in that regard. And if we're honest with ourselves, we have to also understand that our schools fundamentally, a lot of our schools are not equipped, they're not conducive to learning. And so we have to look at the infrastructure in which our children are learning. Hot classrooms, poor circulation of air, poorly lit rooms. We need to take a look at those and take a stand. We need to invest in making those better. You know, we've said this on many political platforms. You know, it's difficult for us, and now I'm talking about people who are members of the People's National Party. We say power, right? A part of the power that we have is that of parents and their involvement in their communities. A significant contributor to how a predictor of how a child will perform is the involvement of parents. And so we have to make sure that we prioritize participation in schools, participation in the life of the learner because that is going to be transformative. That is transformative. So those are the things that we need to emphasize. We need to make sure schools are welcoming to parents, that schools are engaging the communities. And it's, it's, it's not exciting work most of the times, but that's the work that needs to be done to ensure that we get the results that we want.
Thank you, Dr. Russell. I'm just going to ask that we stay as quiet as possible. Just respect the, the residents who have questions to ask and the panelists who have questions to answer. Please. Sir.
Okay. Good evening. Can, can you hear me? Okay. Um, so my question, I need to say who I am first, yes?
Yes.
My name is Dr. Amanda Arboan. I am here on behalf of the Discovery Bay CDC and also on behalf of an organization called JABEM, Jamaica Beach Birthright and Environment Movement. Um, so my question is, and it's to all of the panelists, anyone who wishes to answer. Um, are PNP prepared to provide, to promote as an election issue, um, affordable access to public beaches for everybody? So the reason I'm asking this is because, um, the current government is selling a lot of beaches, you know, beachfront property to hotels and to private individuals. And also, public beaches are being leased, for example, to, to private companies. For example, Porta Seaco is privately owned now. So people can access it if they can afford to pay $2,000 for each person. So imagine a family on a low income, it's not easy. Um, so if I just stick to our local area, Discovery Bay, focusing on that, um, we have only one beach that is actually accessible to anybody, which is the Fisherman's Beach. Now, at the same time, and I don't know if people are aware of this, but there is a green paper to reduce the number of fishermen's beaches as well across the whole island. So what we're seeing is a, 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 a reduction of public access to beaches for Jamaican people. So is there, are you, if you are elected, going to take on this issue and actually promote it as a, as an election issue, please?
Thank you, Doctor. Very important question and issue. So the answer is yes. We are committed to finding a solution to ensure access by our Jamaican people to Jamaica's beaches. We see this as a very important developmental issue, social issue, and really a historical correction that needs to take place. The, and I'm in touch with JABEM. I've had a couple of meetings with Dr. Devon, yeah, who, Taylor, thank you, uh, who I know, um, I know his brother as well, Miguel from Goodwill now. So the Beach Control Act has a provision in it which enables the licensing authority, the Beach Control Authority, to require a easement over a property to provide access to a beach where that property is privately owned. And if the terms and conditions of the grant of that easement are not agreed with the landowner, they can be determined independently, priced and put in place. That provision is not being used, and I'm not sure why. It hasn't historically been used, but it exists. We recognize the importance of, of the tourism industry. And the reality is that Jamaica's tourism industry has evolved through the all-inclusive product primarily. And they have these enclaves where visitors come and they have a wonderful time and people do get employed, et cetera. I'm not here to bash anything. But the reality, that model integrated into the society and the culture of Jamaica to ensure that Jamaica benefits from tourism to the extent it should. And part of this benefit must be that the beautiful assets of our country, our rivers and our beaches must be made accessible. We intend to have good faith, respectful discussions with the hotel sector on defending the rights and interests of the Jamaican people. There is, across the Caribbean, there are many islands which depend on tourism. And none of them, at, at the time I'm aware of, have the same kind of exclusive approach to their beaches. To the contrary, their citizens can enjoy their beaches as well. And, you know, we must have enough faith in ourselves that we can be hospitable and that we can coexist with our visitors in a way which will enhance the quality of their stay and their understanding of the country they visited while allowing our people to participate and enjoy the island that is our home. So the answer is yes, we are committed to doing this by legislation if necessary, but by consensus is the preferred route. Thank you.
Thank you, party leader. I'm going to take a question from one of our social media viewers. And this question is for Dr. Russell. Does the PNP prioritize formulating and adopting a holistic, long-term approach to security that channels the energies of young people through education, supports for career guidance, facilities for young entrepreneurs to tap into opportunities and community development? And how will young people be including in developing and implementing such an approach?
The, the short answer is yes. And the way we do this, remember, the child who is struggling at grade one or struggling at grade two, and that's not corrected, is going to continue to struggle. That child has a higher risk of dropping out in secondary. I am on a board, secondary board, and you have children who, the issues start early, they are not caught, they are not assessed, and so they become, um, acute later on. So our approach is to ensure that you're keeping children in school, you're addressing, you're identifying and addressing the issues early, and then you support them as they go along the pathway in school. But then probably more significant is to make sure you help them with that, with that transition from school to other opportunities. So that's work, that's entrepreneurship, that's tertiary education. And you've heard the different ways in which we intend to do that. When we have young people who have opportunities in their communities, and we haven't talked a lot about that tonight, but we want to make sure that within communities, and we know the conditions of a lot of the community centers, we want to make sure that those are active spaces where young people can express themselves, can have competitions, but can also just be a place for them to hang out or to continue their learning. So look at the trajectory. You're supported while you're in school from an early age. You're supported to transition and you have a community where you also feel supported. That reduces the risk that a child is going to get involved in antisocial activities. And so the answer is yes. We want to ensure that young people are a part of the process. We have a very active youth organization. But as a party, we also will have structures in place to engage young people. And this is going to vary from ministry to ministry, but for the most part, making sure we have young people in decision-making capacities, um, including on some of the boards that we, we appoint people to. So we intend to take this a very holistic approach. And again, it starts early and then has to continue throughout the life cycle of the, of the young people.
Thank you very much, Doc. There's a question from someone over here. Yes, please. I can loan you my microphone, that's okay.
Okay, good evening, everyone. I'm Angela Trill Foster from Nahtie Centane Parish on Pimento Walk, to be exact. And Senans Bay Hospital is dubbed as the morgue. What systems, and this is for comer leader and for Dr. Dawes, what system will you have in place to hold these hospitals accountable for negligence resulting in deaths?
I am also eager to hear the answer to that question, Doc.
So that's, uh, the, the truth is that whichever parish you go, you'll hear that that hospital is a morgue. We hear it a lot with Spanish tone, we hear it with Sal, we hear it. The truth is that, um, when you visit a lot of these hospitals and having worked in some of these hospitals, you are literally given basket to carry water. It means that a lot of the clinical decisions that you make are made in blind faith because you don't have the proper investigations. You don't have the scans, you don't have the blood tests. So you have to start treating and hope that what you're doing is the right thing until somebody can come up with the money to get the scans privately or the test done privately. It is an issue when you write a treatment chart and the pharmacy sends down three days of antibiotics. When you're supposed to get the fourth day, the pharmacy doesn't have the antibiotics to continue. So you have to switch to another antibiotic. You get bacterial resistance and then you have increased chances of sepsis and death. So the system is broken and there are a lot of preventable deaths. I can tell you that. A lot of people are waiting now for proper treatment and investigations and they're going to die because the system is failing them. Now, add it so that you do have an issue with, um, some levels of staffing, uh, and you, you mentioned specifically negligence. When I was at Sal Hospital, I used to get, as a senior medical officer in charge, I wrote that down on the paper that you couldn't read. But I got a lot of complaints about negligence uh, from relatives who had lost a loved one. And you always have to listen to what they're saying. But in almost all cases, there was no negligence. What happened was that they were spoken to or responded to in a very rude manner. And that is what hurt those families. It meant that when sometimes they, they would bring in a relative, they would say that you took long to see them or the staff were very abrupt and rude in dealing with them when they came in. In many instances, nothing could be done. If it is somebody who is bleeding, there is no blood and they're going to die. If they're having a stroke, they're not going to get treatment until they can get a CAT scan at a private facility two, three, four days later. But the manner in which the staff spoke to them in that time of trauma is what they're holding on to and what they conflate with negligence. And this is why I said that when we administer treatment, we have to do it with dignity. And it means retraining all our staff to get them to understand and to buy in. Commensurate with that, we have to give them the tools. And when we give them the tools, we build in the accountability with audits from the National Quality Assurance Committee that we're going to implement. And that is how we are going to improve the quality of the delivery of healthcare and how that healthcare is delivered.
Yes, I'm just going to take this lady first. No, just a minute, just a minute. We've been concentrating on this side of the audience and we are just bringing some equality. That's all. Just a minute.
Good evening. Good, good evening. My name is Doreen Gentle, better known as Doreen Avis Williams Ellis Edwards Gentle. I know, I no longer reside here, but I was, but was, I, I was brought up in a home which is completely beef from, I was like this. Okay, what I need to ask a prospective Minister of Health is that back in the day, we had, I started out working at a hospital as a nurse's aide. From there, there was a program implemented under the PNP government where we, they had Black River, Spalding's, Port Maria. I don't remember which other hospitals had the EAN program, which is like the same as an LPN program. Okay, but it's private because I have not met a nurse here so far since I've been here. I'm going on two months here that is not privately trained. And there are nurses who trained as LPN, as we know it in America, like myself, and go on to be a RN right here in Jamaica, become one of my batchmates because I was trained in Port Maria. Not only one, about three of my batchmates went on to be registered nurses, climb up the ladder, became matrons, sisters, what have you. I hear, I have not hear you propose that program tonight. So I am very, very interested to know is the hospital is going to continue with that? Because I have not met one nurse so far that has been trained from working in the hospital, taking the test, passing the test, it's not just going in, let, get it straight. You got to pass that test. to pass that test, you got to pass that interview to go into the program. I wanna know if, because I have been to this St. Anne's Bay Hospital, like she said, but I won't speak on that right now, to... And I have not seen one, I didn't see one EAN when I went there. But I know, traveling Jamaica, I have met a lot of people who do the program, but they have to pay for it. When I did the program, I was bonded for a year and six months, I couldn't go anywhere. I had to stay and work, which I did, and I would like to know if that program is gonna be re-implemented so that people can get the opportunity to move up the line, work up the line, go to school, be helped, because as you know, and they don't know, and they are my comrades, that nurses in Jamaica is, nursing in Jamaica is not like nursing then, but we are very short, very, very short. They can make the noise they want, thank you.
Doc, could you... I'm gonna ask that we just be quiet, Dr. Dawes provides his response. Could you clearly state the program that she's referring to?
So, when you go to a hospital, you'll have different nurses. You'll have the RN, who is a registered nurse, and they train for four years. The EAN, to, which my comrade and friend referred to, is the EAN, the enrolled assistant nurse, and they train for about two years. Now, the levels of responsibility are different, so like the RN, they're the ones who can set up the IVs, give certain type of medication, do certain type of monitoring for certain patients. The EANs basically help the RNs, but they have to be supervised by the RNs. Now, many EANs, they go on, having gotten their EAN certification, they go on to do other subspecialties. So, a lot of them go into the operating theatres and train, and become scrub techs and assist with surgery. Some may go on and do mid-referee, and some may go on and complete the RN course and upgrade to RNs. So, the program does exist, and it is a channel by which many EANs, they upgrade themselves to the specialties that they like, and maybe that's why you don't see a whole lot of them. But, with respect to, and again, because of the time constraints, I couldn't go into everything that we want to do, but nursing training and retention is pivotal to improving our healthcare sector. We have a high outflow of nurses, and we cannot compete with England, Canada, even our Caribbean neighbors Bahamas, Cayman, in terms of what we pay them. We have to increase the input, the intake of nurses, and that means expanding training and specialist training opportunities for the nurses. Bonding will not work, we'll have to find some other ways to have nurses want to stay here and to disincentivize recruiters from coming in, taking our best and brightest nurses to go off. It is a worldwide problem in the global south, and it may mean cooperation with other countries to have training. We have actually had some discussions with the Cubans, they train a lot of medical personnel, medical doctors. The issue they have with training nurses in Cuba is the language barrier. There are more doctor trainers who will train the doctors, rather than, well, after, well, they would teach the doctors English, Spanish, so they can get the medical training. They don't have that setup for nursing as yet, and that is something that we would have to look at developing with Cuba and other partners, where if, it's a case where we can send away on scholarships many of our nurses to train, and they come back and they're bonded, then we can actually increase the number of nurses in hospitals.
Thank you, Doc. You have a question, sir? Please state your name, the constituency you are from, and the panelists that you are directing your question to.
Good night, everyone. My name is Kamara Enkroma, Northwest. My question is directed to the incoming Prime Minister of Jamaica.
Indeed.
The, I'll make a comment followed by the question. The construction industry is, I'm not too sure, but it could be the largest employment sector in the country at the present time. We have, we have a situation where the, there's a lot of inflow of overseas workers into that particular industry. And the labor law, which protects Jamaican workers, are not practiced, not at all. The foreign workers are paid in US dollar, we are paid in Jamaican dollar to do the same amount of work. And the argument in Jamaica is that Jamaican worker don't have the skill, and I will, that reference about Jamaican workers don't have the skill is just a taboo and a lie, because we have to clean up a lot of unfinished work that they do in the industry, and still paid at Jamaican rate. And our money is the money that circulate in the country, their money exported overseas. And therefore, I want to know what the government of the PNP going to do to ensure that the labor law is practiced so that Jamaican workers get equal pay within the industry.
Thank you for that question. Just today, there was a, an article in the Glean, I think it was, in which the Master Builders Association were complaining that in the Project Spark program, which is this road program that the government has rolled out to repair our patch roads, well, they're saying that the workers are not being paid in accordance with the agreed rates that have been settled in the construction industry. So, there is a problem, and there's a problem of compliance with our laws and standards. And you may know that in the Spark, in the case of Spark program, the main contractor is an overseas contractor. We are a party that respects the rights of workers and defends the rights of workers. We are a party that set up the Industrial Disputes Tribunal in the 1970s, which is having its 50th anniversary this year, which was designed to bring justice to the workplace for workers who previously would not have had access to any kind of recourse if their rights were abused. We introduced the Termination Redundancy Payments Act, so as to ensure that workers, if they were made redundant, had a benefit to get. We are the party that promoted employee share ownership, and in our privatization programs, we try to ensure that when government was privatizing companies, shares were made available to the workers to participate in that. So, we are committed to a process of upholding and defending the rights of workers. We believe, for example, there should be joint industrial councils, like there is in the construction industry, but also what about in the security guard industry, or indeed in the hotel sector, where there were a number of strikes late last year, you may remember, several hotels experienced strikes as a result of concerns that their workers had, and their workers had no representation. So, the laws should be enforced and upheld, and we should encourage investors in this country to understand that violations of those basic norms of how business is conducted here, and how our people are treated, will not be tolerated. Now, having said that, there is more and more we are hearing from the business sector in the country, that there's a challenge finding workers to do certain tasks, and that the ability of businesses to expand and so on is being affected by the fact that they can't find the workers that they need. So, we have to be mindful of that, and we want to improve the training facility, the training process in the country, to, so that we can build out a workforce that fills those gaps. That's why Dr. Russell mentioned a policy that we have, which is to have a modern state-of-the-art vocational training lab in every high school. It's gonna take us some time to get to that, but we, that is our plan, so that students can achieve Level 4 certification in relevant skills by the time they leave school, and will be employable if they choose not to pursue a university education. And not only employable, but employable in a job which has high value added because they will have the skills to do that type of work. We also want to encourage the private sector to expand their training facilities in cooperation with the state sector and Hart, by matching dollar-for-dollar investment in training from the Hart resources to encourage the private sectors, entities, to roll out the training that they can do. Because the reality is that their training is typically very focused on the actual needs of the workplace, and ensuring that the workers have the skills that are needed for the specific industries that they're in. So, training is a vital part of solving our problems in terms of product, national productivity, but also to bring the several hundred people, who when we hear that there's unemployment of 3.4, 3.7 percent, they're only taking into account the workforce, persons who are either employed or looking for work. But there are several hundred Jamaican adults, or people over 14, who are not looking for work, and are not part, not taken into account when you look at the unemployment number, even though they're not working. And we need to get into that number and analyze those hundreds, hundreds of thousands of Jamaicans, and see how we can get them into the world of work by appropriate training and so on. And that is part of what we mean when we say expanding training in a more inclusive way. So, the answer is yes, we will defend and uphold the rights of workers, we will encourage employee share ownership, we will encourage joint industrial councils so that industries which have typically low levels of representation, but high levels of employment, and where workers are often disgruntled about how they're treated, we will have employer and employee representation on an industry-wide basis to set minimum standards that must be upheld in the industry, and raise standards to that level. And that is part of how we approach industrial relations and improving the lives of the Jamaican people. Thank you for your question. The young lady there who had asked a question about St. Anne's Bay Hospital, which had been responded to by Dr. Dawes, she wanted to hear from me on that topic. Well, what I would say is this, what we've seen is a steady decline in the population's sense of how healthcare standards are being maintained in the public health facilities. And we, as Dr. Dawes has said, are going to be focusing on investing in things that directly improve the experience of the public when they interface with the public health system, through focusing on service and standards, rather than large projects, big mega-capital projects, which are often delayed or overrun, and provide avenues for corruption and the movement of public resources away from the designated things for which they should be spent, into the pockets of those who should not get them. And when we see what has happened in Cornell Regional Hospital, for example, where a project that should have been completed years ago, and which was originally budgeted to be two or so billion dollars, has gone over $21 billion, and now no, can't finish, and it's pure PR going, where they're having ribbon cutting for Cornell Regional, and it's an administrative office which they've built, and the hospital itself is nowhere near ready. This is the kind of problem that the approach that this government has taken to healthcare delivery has brought. So, we're talking, all the things that Dr. Dawes has spoken to, how you take pressure off the hospitals by improving screening and monitoring, so that we can catch things early. So, we are also having, you know, acute care centers, which are sufficiently staffed and equipped, that you can deal with many problems that don't require hospitalization if they're addressed quickly. Take the pressure off of hospitals like St. Anne's Bay, and of course, we are gonna focus on trying to improve the standards and opportunities for our healthcare workers, so have more people coming into nursing and staying in Jamaica to do their nursing than migrating. So, it's a holistic approach that's required, and it won't happen overnight, but our philosophy and our approach is sound and principled, and will bring a better Jamaica in due course.
I can see why you wanted to hear from the party leader, that's indeed the icing on the cake. You have a question, sir?
Good evening, everyone. Good evening, comrade leader, welcome to Centan. My name is Phil Pat Mitchell, I'm the caretaker for the Joy Harbor Division in Northwest Centan. I have two questions, one for the party leader, and one for Dr. Russell. Party leader, I want to ask a question. How does the government make money from these investors that build all these hotels, but yet 99% of the workers are on contracts? And, and Dr. Russell, what will the PNP party, when they go into power, pay the teachers more?
The use of contract work has become a problem in Jamaica, because contract work is really appropriate, where it's a short-term relationship with somebody who is not under the direction and control, in the way they work, of the employer, but is an independent person, like a plumber, or somebody, an electrician, somebody who's being engaged under contract. What has happened in Jamaica is that in certain industries and in certain companies, they use the contract system to have a succession of rolling short-term arrangements, so as to avoid a lot of the benefits that workers ought to be entitled to under our labor laws. And I have said, and I'll repeat it here now, that we will be bringing legislation in Jamaica to eliminate the abusive use of contracts at the workplace. Now, on the issue of teachers' pay, I know you're asked to hear from Dr. Russell. We have to look at everything, and we are very mindful of the need to ensure that our teachers are comfortable and want to stay in the school system. And so, if you've listened to Senator Crawford and Dr. Russell, you will see that we have a teacher retention strategy that involves a variety of different benefits, that will be an incentive to teachers, just, including housing, including motor vehicle allowances, including student debt forgiveness, variety of things, that we are targeting the teachers and the public servants generally as well, for some of them, to encourage them to stay. I do not want to comment specifically on the issue of salaries, and comrade Phil Pat, you should know better than asking me that.
So, the teacher didn't have to answer the question, because the principal did. Alright, so, I'm gonna take my final four questions for tonight. It's getting a bit late, final four questions. Please, go ahead, sir. I'm gonna ask you just to tone down a bit. Indeed.
Good evening, everyone. And I must first comment and say thank you. My name is Michael Downer, also known as Jamaics in the public. You hearing me? Everybody hearing me? Good nights again. I am Michael Downer, also Jamaics. I want to say first thing, thank you ever so much for this innovative initiative to hearing the voice of Jamaicans. We have started the process to now fixing things, because Jamaicans feel for nine years that we was never been heard, and now we get a voice. So, I must commend on that, say thank you to the peoples nationally. So I must commend on that, say thank you to the People's National Party. Secondly, I have never voted. I am talking on the issues of tourism. I've been in the tourism industry for over a decade and I've seen the ins and outs and I see the growth that the people in Jamaica feel. With over 300,000 employed Jamaicans, approximately 30% of the population, with a $4.38 billion that the tourism product has made, the tourism workers are not feeling the benefit. And with that being said, we'd love to know what the party has in mind to solve this issue and give a sense of dignity and pride to hotel workers. So my question is to the leader of the party, what is the People's National Party's plan of action or what will they be doing about the tourism workers, the cry of us?
Well, the issue of contract work is an aspect. I think it affects the tourism industry and the tourism workers as well. So that's a solution to that issue will benefit the workers in the tourism industry. Also, the encouragement of the establishment of a joint industrial council in the tourism industry so that there is a mechanism where tourism worker interests are represented, employer interests are there as well, and the state plays a role in mediation and helping to find solutions so that we can have packages of basic benefits across the sector, which all hotels are expected to adhere to. Because right now, my understanding is that there's a significant variation of the way in which workers are treated in the sector from hotel to hotel. There's not uniformity in that. So those are two important initiatives that we will look at. And we're also looking at the possibility, for example, of incentivizing tips and gratuities which already were recently exempted from tax. But we're looking also at the possibility of whether you can do something special for overtime work as well. But we haven't finalized our provision on that. But essentially, we want to give tourism workers protection by ensuring that they have effective representation through a mechanism which investors don't need to worry about because it's transparent and well-designed and balancing, but where workers' rights will have an avenue for being protected. Because that does not exist now and we need to eliminate the abusive contract work system which exists today. So those are the three things I would mention at this point to talk about. Yes, and as Senator Morris has mentioned, you know, housing for tourism workers. In many of the areas there, we plan to be building affordable housing. They will benefit tourism workers as well. So that's another area where tourism workers can look to see some improvement in their quality of life under a PMP government. Thank you.
Thank you, party leader. For the final three questions, I'm going to take all the questions and then the relevant panelists will answer. Final three questions. Please go ahead, sir.
Good evening, everybody. Yes, as I said, good evening. I'm comrade Anthony Charlie from Brownstone, northwest. Dr. Dawes, I have been following your career for a good while. And in my heart, I am happy that you are going to represent health. Comrade leader, I am going to beg you out of abundance of caution. St. Anne's Bay Hospital is in a deplorable condition. Why in closer, comrade leader, go eat it. The atrocities that is happening at that hospital is unbelievable. I know you have a hard task ahead of you, but what I'm going to implore upon you is that we've been suffering for a long time. So we're going to want some immediate action, as best as you can. And I speak from the point of view that I was the PDC chairman for four years and I am also the senior JP for the Partra St. Anne and what they call a JP commander. I've had two JPs, a brother and a sister, that died. And they did not have to die, but due to utter stupidity and confusion, they died. We had one JP who was bleeding internally, got ill and went to the hospital. They examined her and gave her a three-week date to do the operation to save her life. She died two days later, didn't make it to the operation. Another fellow JP had an injury, went to the hospital. The hospital did not have the medication. The son had to drive all the way to Kingston to get the necessary equipment to come back to the hospital to save his father, only to find out that the doctor who was to administer the procedure wasn't working that day and wouldn't be coming in until the following day. The man died. My father, who I love to the bottom of my heart, went to the hospital for an infection, it was a little chest infection. They started him on an antibiotic that wasn't working. So they had to switch him to another antibiotic, which was supposed to be a 14-day or 15-day antibiotic regimen. They only had antibiotics for eight days, so they had to stop him. And then he stayed there for one week waiting to get the next dose of antibiotic. Well, sepsis set in and he died. So St. Anne's Bay Hospital, you're going horizontal and you come out horizontal. I am saying that, comrade leader, when you become the prime minister, I'm just going to ask that some priority be given to St. Anne's Bay and not to forget Alexandria. If you could get Alexandria back up and take the pressure off of St. Anne's Bay. My uncle, Dr. Paul Magnus, used to run Alexandria Hospital. But when he retired, that was it, the hospital dropped down. So it is like it's a clinic up there that needs some help. Dannishka, Dannishka need help up there. People, people are sick and by the time they leave Alexandria to reach St. Anne's Bay Hospital, them dead because them can't get no help. So I'm only asking out of an abundance of caution.
We are getting a bit restless and it's late. Just allow us to finish the questions. Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. I'm Benal from Alexandria Division of Southwest St. Anne. My question is to you, Dr. Dawes, and it's concerning the Alexandria Hospital, as mentioned previously by Mr. Nick.
We are not able to hear the questions being asked.
Once we have an hospital, a general hospital, now we have a community hospital which only operates maternity after 10:00 p.m. So if there is an emergency in the area, we don't have adequate ambulance service. We don't have good roads, so a lot of people suffer dearly, traveling all the way to St. Anne's Bay. So we want you to address that situation for us, please.
And our final question for the night.
Good night, everyone. I am Ann Marie White from Southwest. This question is for Senator Morris. In Southwest St. Anne, we are hearing about and given by the Member of Parliament. We would like to know, when you form the next government, will the people of Southwest St. Anne be able to access a housing at lower cost? Not like what, not like the Alexandria estate that's not forward at all. Thank you.
So we have toured St. Anne's Bay Hospital and Alexandria. And as I had mentioned at the start, St. Anne's Bay Hospital is now a major hospital. It's not just a regular type B and it will be a priority for the next PMP administration. And Alexandria Hospital, we have heard the cries and Dannishka, help is on the way.
All right, thank you for your question and I want to say to you, yes, Southwest St. Anne will benefit from the housing initiatives that we will be implementing. And as I've indicated, your candidate has entered early upon the reference to try and get affordable housing to come to Southwest St. Anne. And she's not like a candidate or a Member of Parliament who sits there for nine years and makes a promise and has not delivered. I can guarantee you that once the People's National Party forms the government, we are going to deliver on our commitment to building the first housing scheme in Southwest St. Anne in many, many moons.
We have come to the close of our question and answer segment. I believe it was very productive, informative and engaging. With that said, let me call on the Member of Parliament candidate for Southwest St. Anne to bring the vote of thanks.
Good evening, everyone. Party leader, next prime minister of Jamaica, good evening. On behalf of the People's National Party, I extend a heartfelt thank you to each and everyone here tonight for being a part of the first People's Forum. To our distinguished speakers, Senator Dr. Floyd Morris, Senator Dr. Professor Floyd Morris, Dr. Alfred Dawes, Dr. Kenneth Russell and our party leader, all your contributions have really added value and have helped us to understand more about what the policies that the People's National Party will be bringing when we form the next government. So I want to say thank you for your powerful presentations. To my colleague parliamentary candidates, to my colleague parliamentary candidates across St. Anne, Dr. Ryan Simpson, Senator Gabriella Morris, your contributions this evening have also added great value and confirms that team PNP is committed to putting the best candidates forward to deliver quality leadership to constituents across this parish as well as the 13 other parishes. Our moderator, comrade councillor Katie Ann Hardy, nothing short of excellence. She helped to keep order here today. To the General Secretary, the next Minister of Agriculture, Deputy Gensek, Dexroy Martin and the team for putting this lovely event together, I want to say thank you as well. And to the residents of St. Anne who came out here in your numbers. At one point, we had to get some extra chairs. I want to say thank you for your presence, your passion, your participation and your willingness to work with this team PNP as we deliver quality leadership to you. And to the media and everyone joining us on social media, thank you for your continued support and engagement. I want to say a very special thank you to my constituents of Southwest St. Anne for joining us here tonight. You have had nine years of neglect. You have had nine years of neglect, but we see you, we hear you and we are ready to serve you. As you've heard tonight, we have big plans for St. Anne and the People's National Party is committed to delivering to you in these critical areas of housing, agriculture, education, among so many others. Your future matters and we are ready and committed to deliver to you. Let me close by reminding everyone here that change is on the way. Help is coming and time come. Please travel home safely and continue to stand with us as we build a better Jamaica for everyone.
The People's National Party is on a mission. But we are including you, our citizens, on that mission. Government is a partnership and we are committing to strengthening our participatory governance framework. Ladies and gentlemen, it was my pleasure hosting you this evening. I'd like to thank you all for coming out and I'd especially like to thank our hosts, Holiday Haven, for this lovely, lovely location. Hold the music, Mr. Music Man. Please, the national pledge. The national pledge. Purses around the back, the national pledge. Before God. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen.